Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us for the Village of Arlington Heights Town Hall Discussion about Diversity and Inclusion. We're grateful to everyone who took time out of their evening to attend and participate in this important discussion. I'm Tanya Suttles. I'm an executive consultant and strategic alliance partner with the Kaleidoscope Group, and I'm joined by my colleagues, Dr. Jesse Lee and Dr. Matt Jones. The three of us are honored to moderate this important discussion about diversity in Arlington Heights. The purpose of this discussion is to create an opportunity to follow up with village officials and other government leaders whose agencies and organizations serve residents, businesses, and visitors of Arlington Heights. Please know, this is not the only opportunity to discuss diversity and inclusion with community leaders, and future opportunities are planned. With that in mind, as we begin our town hall meeting, please assume that everyone here has positive intent. Please join us with an open mind, be accepting of new ideas, and please be respectful of each other and our panelists, and remember that our purpose tonight is to share and gather information, perspectives, and ideas from one another so that Arlington Heights successfully enhances inclusiveness and diversity and welcomeness in the community. This isn't a forum for decision-making, and we're really much more oriented toward sharing thoughts and ideas with one another. Our presentation tonight is broken into two key parts. First, we'll facilitate a moderated discussion with government officials and leaders and ask questions that stemmed from the two community listening sessions held just a few weeks ago. And then we'll open the floor to community members who wish to offer commentary or ask questions of leaders. To participate in this open discussion, please use the Zoom feature to raise your hand so that one of our moderators can send you a request to unmute your microphone and speak when it is your turn. Alternatively, you can also use the chat box to ask a question or request an opportunity to speak. Please keep in mind, though, that each community member is limited to two minutes to address the panel. And at the two-minute mark, we'll mute your microphone so that we can accommodate as many community members as we possibly can in this short session. And we'll go over these instructions again as we open the community forum part of tonight's town hall meeting. So with that, I have the privilege of introducing you to the Mayor of Arlington Heights, the Honorable Tom Hayes. Mr. Mayor, welcome so much to this community town hall meeting, and thank you for sharing your time and thoughts with us this evening.
Well, thanks, Tanya, and thanks to the whole team at Kaleidoscope for assisting us in our efforts to make Arlington Heights an even more welcoming and inclusive place to live, work, and visit. Thanks also to all of you. I think more than 70 people now have joined us tonight via Zoom for this very unique and important event in the 133-year history of our great community. I hope that everyone had a safe and happy Thanksgiving last week. Despite a very challenging last nine months for all of us during the COVID-19 pandemic, we do have a lot to be thankful for here in Arlington Heights, the city of good neighbors. They say it takes a village, and so I want to thank the many who have contributed to the quality of life we enjoy and our reputation as the best place to live in the Daily Herald readership area and as one of the safest communities of our size in the country. It's a very lofty goal, as there is really no such place on earth. But I've always seen Arlington Heights as the biblical shining city on a hill, a place where people only do what is just and good. I'm hoping that this town hall tonight and our ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts will help us get a little closer to that goal. I've been on the village board for a long time now, but my time as mayor in the last seven and a half years has given me the opportunity to get out into the village on a more regular basis and discover the ever-increasing diversity in our community in recent years. It was that realization that led the village board to include finding new ways to embrace diversity within the community and village government as one of our top strategic priorities at our goal-setting session back in 2019, and ultimately led to the DEI audit we are currently engaged in. Back in March and April, I thought nothing could force COVID-19 off the front burner. Then came the senseless murder of George Floyd. While I could not be more proud of the peaceful and respectful manner in which our residents and police force handled the resulting protests, I could not have been more disgusted and embarrassed by the several criminal acts of hateful graffiti within our borders that incurred over the course of this past summer because they are just not reflective of who we are as a community. Let me say it again: Hate has no home and will not be tolerated here. To me, the solution is simple: Treat everyone with respect and dignity they deserve as human beings. Knowing that it is unfortunately not that simple, we are not here tonight to solve the world's problems. While I in the village board, as well as other local government committees are attending, this is not a village board meeting tonight, so there will be no votes taken. We are, however, here to listen and consider how we might all work together to do what we can to do better here in our little corner of the world. Understanding again that it takes a village to run a village, and that Arlington Heights, as many other elected and appointed officials besides the mayor, the village board, and the village manager that make up our local government team, I do want to acknowledge our community partners at the school districts, the park district, and the library, and the role that they play in fostering a healthy culture of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community. They can speak for themselves here tonight, but I know that they all take these issues very seriously and share my belief that we should not only do this, but do it thoughtfully and deliberately, and ultimately do it right. So with that said, thank you again for joining us this evening. I look forward to a very productive session, and in particular, to listening to and learning from what you all have to say.
Your Honor, thank you so much for those comments to get us started with this discussion. The next thing I'd like to do is introduce each member of our panel. In addition to Mayor Hayes, we are joined by village manager Randy Recklau, Chief of Police Nick Pacora.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening. Library Executive Director Mike Driscoll, Superintendent of District 21 Michael Connolly, Superintendent of District 23 Don Angelaccio, Superintendent of District 25 Lori Vine, Superintendent of District 214 Dave Shuler, and Park District Executive Director Carrie Fullerton. Panelists, thank you for your time and your dedication to this important initiative of the Village of Arlington Heights. I know that so many of the community members are looking forward to hearing your thoughts and ideas, and so without further delay, let's get started. This first question is directed to village manager Randy Recklau, and I'd like to start by asking you to describe some recent enhancements to the culture of the Village of Arlington Heights government. What steps has the village made to create an inclusive community, including managing bias, identification of gaps in service delivery, and what steps do you envision for the future?
Well, thank you, Tanya. Great question. And, you know, I think, as the mayor said, culture starts at the top. And when the mayor and village board made embracing diversity, equity, and inclusion one of their top goals back in 2019, that really set a tone for the whole organization, for all of us to kind of relook at what we do, how we do it, and, you know, kind of who we are, what our values are as an organization. Obviously, this process and this, you know, review is a big step in that direction where we're really looking at where are our gaps? Are we hitting best practices? And part of that is talking to our residents and stakeholders about what their experience has been. And so this meeting tonight is a big step in that process. But we have taken some other steps in the interim. We recently, over the last couple of months, have required all of our employees to undergo implicit bias training, and that training really helps people become aware of where their own biases are, because we all have them. And if you are aware of them, then you can kind of prevent yourself from acting upon them. And that process has been very helpful to generate a lot of discussion within the organization, within our management team as well. Some of the other things that we've done is looking, we look at gaps. Language is one of those barriers that does come up from time to time in our community. And we went through the process of prioritizing the hiring of and the identification of all of our multilingual employees within the village so that if we identify a language barrier, we can see, make sure we have someone on staff that can help us bridge that gap. We currently have 52 multilingual employees in the employ of the village among the different departments, and they collectively speak 19 different languages. So that's something that we've helped, that's helped us, and we've really tried to prioritize those skills in our hiring processes going forward. Another thing that we're doing is we're doing a disabilities accommodation assessment to make sure that we can eliminate barriers to make us a more attractive employer and service provider for individuals with disabilities. We have created a community, what we call the Community Addiction Recovery Effort, and this is an effort where we look at kind of how we do things, not just who we are and how we operate, but how we do things. And that effort is really attempted to look at drug addiction not just as a straight-up law enforcement effort, but also as a healthcare effort. And that's been spearheaded by our police department along with our fire and health and human services departments over the past couple of years to start looking at addiction again as a community health effort as well. Recently, we reorganized along the lines of looking at how we do things. We reorganized the social services division of our health and human services department, and we now employ a full-time social worker in that department for the first time. And by reorganizing, we are allowing for greater interaction between the social services coordinator and our disability services coordinator to make sure that we aren't, things aren't slipping through the cracks. And we're right now in the process of hiring our very first caseworker as well. So we're looking at a lot of different things, but I think that we're very anxious to see what recommendations come from this process as well, because we really see this as not a destination project, but really more of an attitude and a journey, that these are things we're always going to have to be examining going forward.
Thank you so much for that response. That was very, very thorough for us, and I have a next question for you. One of the key areas of interest that residents mentioned during our listening sessions are that they'd like to see more movement in the area of affordable housing. Mr. Recklau, can you provide an update to the community about efforts to improve both affordable housing and affordable living within the village?
Sure. It's a great question. And, you know, Arlington Heights is a community that is, you know, in a lot of ways blessed that we have a lot of people that want to live here. We have great community services. As the mayor mentioned, we're one of the safest communities in the country for our size, and we have a lot to offer. But a lot of times, what that means is property values go up and rents go up, and it gets more and more difficult for folks that maybe work in the community or people that may have lived in this community their entire lives to afford to live here anymore. And so it's a real challenge, and it is something that we've looked to address. We have had an Affordable Housing Ordinance on the books for ourselves since 2004. We are one of only seven communities out of the hundreds in the Chicago metro area to have an Affordable Housing Ordinance. And about two years ago, around that same time that the mayor was talking about our last strategic priority retreat, we really began looking at, and the board kind of expressed that the Affordable Housing Ordinance that we had in effect really wasn't getting us the results that we had hoped for. And so over the last year, we really made a concerted effort to relook at those issues and look at how can we improve, add more teeth to make our Affordable Housing Ordinance more reflective of today's market realities and make it something that really is going to achieve results. And over the past two years, our housing commission and our village board met several times on this issue, and in August of this year, we updated it. And now we call it the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And it's something where now new rental properties have to include some affordable housing as part of their project, between 5% and 10% of their units, depending on the type of project that it is. For sale units are required to contribute to an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that we have that we're going to use in the future to fund new affordable housing projects. And those are, and we're actually going to be having a discussion over the next year as to what are some potential uses of those trust fund monies. But we also know that affordable housing, part of it is being able to stay in your home. And our emergency assistance fund, which is funded by a contribution of village funds and grants from the Arlington Cares Foundation, we provide rent and mortgage assistance for people that have fallen on hard times, and we've unfortunately had to help more people this year than we ever have. This year, we've helped over 200 people stay in their homes, and we've spent almost $150,000 so far in that fund to do that. Another program that we have that we don't talk about very often, but it's something that I think is pretty unique, is we have our single-family rehab program where we provide zero-interest loans to low and moderate-income residents who qualify, up to $25,000 for them to do repairs to their homes, allow them to stay there and allow them to keep their homes in good shape. And so we're trying to hit this issue on a lot of fronts, and like the overall diversity, equity, inclusion, we know that this is going to evolve over time, and, you know, we need always be looking at new ways to keep affordability, but it is something that we prioritize in recent years.
Well, thank you so much for that, for that response. This next question is for the superintendents of various school districts who are with us this evening. One of the concerns that we heard from community members about diversity and inclusion involves the schools. And a comment we heard often is that there are few teachers who look like kids from diverse populations, and there's some concerns that there are inequities in education between the school districts. So please share with us what steps, what steps each school district is taking to ensure that students engage with teachers, staff, and learning materials that value diversity and inclusion.
Tanya, I'll start. Thank you. Thanks, Mike. I want to say that I feel very fortunate to be on this panel, all of the different districts represented here today. We have a very collaborative group. We meet on a weekly basis to share information, as we all do, serve families in the community in Arlington Heights. But this is a great question, because here in Arlington Heights, District 25, that question is really true. We do not have a very diverse staff, and like all areas of Arlington Heights and the northwest suburbs, we have growing diversity in our students. So we appreciate the opportunity to be a part of this tonight. Some of the things that we're doing in Arlington Heights, we are working with the Commission on Diversity and Human Rights, which will be providing a multi-year experience of professional development for all of our staff about inclusion and equity, and will also be helping us to change some practices, open our hiring practices to hopefully encourage more diverse candidates to apply in Arlington Heights. And on behalf of all of my colleagues in our different districts, early this calendar year, we wrote to all Illinois universities that have an education department, encouraging them to have their teacher candidates of diverse backgrounds apply to the school districts in Arlington Heights, letting them know that we would make sure they were included in our interview process. I'm not sure how my colleagues did as a result of that, but in District 25, we still saw only a few candidates. And what we're also know that, and I'll let Dave talk about, the high school district and the Grow Your Own program it's doing is really going to benefit us in the long run as they help more local diverse students go into the field of education.
Lori, I'll piggyback on that. Prospect Heights District 23, only by name, is Prospect Heights. We actually serve portions of Wheeling, half of Prospect Heights, also a portion of Mount Prospect, and of course, our residents in Arlington Heights. So sometimes we're not a part of that conversation, so I greatly appreciate the opportunity to be here and represent District 23. I was going to steal Dave Shuler's thunder and talk all about Grow Your Own, because it's a phenomenal program, and that is one of the ways that District 23 is addressing this issue. But Dave, I'll leave that for you, because that is a phenomenal program that you all have developed. I would say there's two components. One, on the hiring side, I would simply speak to our efforts to refocus our hiring practices, interview, recruitment, and hiring through a competency-based lens. We also took some time to recognize what implicit biases we may have and how that might be limiting our candidate pool. For example, we blocked the university that candidates are from, because I'm a Badger, and so I'm just biased right off the bat toward Big Ten. And if I see Big Ten, I go, oh, that looks really cool. But that doesn't mean that the candidate is most competent. So our practices has helped, have helped us to focus our review of candidates based on quality and competency, and that has in turn eliminated some of those biases and will hopefully help us to recruit and identify a more diverse population. On the curriculum side, I'll simply say we are in the process this year of a curriculum review for our social-emotional learning standards. The curriculum review process is ongoing, so, but this year particularly, that's a topic of focus for us so that we are ensuring that the materials that we're using and the information that we're sharing with students are reflective of social equity and DEI types of topics. So good things going on, and it's awesome that we, as a community, are having this
So I'll jump in from District 21's perspective. You know, we know that we need to do a better job with attracting and staff that look like our kids, right? And we have an extremely diverse district. You know, we have dozens of languages spoken. We have students from all ethnic backgrounds. I am proud, however, that we have over 20% of our staff persons from minority backgrounds. And, but that's not enough. You know, we are a majority-minority-population district, and so we need to always be working to ensure that our staff reflect, you know, the children that they are teaching in their classrooms. I think one of the things that we are really targeting is how we recruit, and particularly insofar as many of the teaching staff that we are seeking to hire also really do need to have language backgrounds. You know, we are looking at the different bilingual teaching job fairs and, again, partnering with 214 and the Grow Your Own program. We have a partnership with Ohio State University where we have teacher candidate interns. We have found them to be a very good pipeline and certainly an area where we can work to try and attract minority candidates. But beyond that, our strategic plan, our Board of Education adopted our first strategic plan in many years in January of 2020, and we have five priority goals, the third one being a building a high-quality faculty and staff. And certainly, the ethnicity and the background and really reflecting the values of the community is a key to that. And so we're really marshaling a lot of different ways of trying to address those issues. You know, one of the things as kind of a starting point, we teamed up with the Legal Women Voters in August, I believe, and sponsored a community-based implicit bias training. And that was just a very, very, very small entry point to the work that we're going to be continuing to do over the next several years.
And I would offer, I think, three points. And Tanya, if my internet stalls, you just wave and I'll turn my camera off. It'll probably be better for everybody else on the call anyway. But I would say, you know, I don't want to speak for my colleagues. I've learned not to do that a long time ago, but in this case, I think I can. We are not looking for staff that solely look like our students. We are looking for high-quality, competent staff that represent the students that we teach. And those are two very different things. And so when we go out and we actively are looking for candidates that are highly competent, high-quality, who resemble and represent the students in our communities, we have to look at that differently. And so when we go to a recruitment fair, we used to sit behind a table and let candidates come to us. We don't do that anymore, because a lot of candidates, especially candidates of color, don't think of coming to the northwest suburbs. So we send two or three people, and those second and that third people, their job is to go walk around and look for people that might be really good candidates not standing in our line and pull them into our line, because we have the best school systems in the country right here in our area. We need the best teachers, right? So that's number one. Number two, I think we've really been thoughtful about looking for candidates, especially leadership positions, when we don't need a leadership position. It may take me a year or two to recruit someone to come into a vacancy, and we all struggle with finding high-quality principals. The pool is very, very shallow. So if I know I have someone retiring in the next two or three years, or someone who's going to move on to be an associate or an assistant superintendent, I'm actively scouring, looking for people who I might be able to encourage to consider coming and partnering with us. And, you know, I've had the honor of being the superintendent in District 214 for over 16 years, and I'm super proud to say that on our cabinet, for 12 of those 16 years, have been at least one person of color. And I'm happy that we've had, in the 14 years of the 16, at least one principal of color, if not two. And that was not for us sitting back, but from us actively going out and recruiting the best of the best that can be role models for our students. And the third thing, which is, you know, what Mike and Don and Lori all talked about, is it became really clear about three or four years ago that we did not have people going into teaching. That teacher pipeline was shrinking, fewer and fewer kids were entering teacher ed programs, and even fewer individuals of color were entering those programs. That was a huge challenge. So as we sat back as a District 214 leadership team, we said, you know what we're going to do? We're going to build the pipeline for our area. So we created a Grow Your Own program where students indicate that they're interested in being a teacher, and then while they're with us, they earn between nine and 12 college credits in teaching, where they have four field experiences: one in an elementary school, one in a middle school or junior high, one in a special ed setting, and one in a high school setting. And then we partner at the elementary level with National Lewis University. Illinois University. And those universities will work, and we offer dual credit, so early college credit while they're with us. The universities have both agreed to cut off a portion of their post-secondary experience, so they don't have to stay that four to five years. We will guarantee them a student-teaching experience in our 214 community and an interview upon graduation. And when we started that program, our first year, we had maybe 50 students that were interested. This last year, we now have over 450 students district-wide that are in the program, and of those, over 51% of our children are students of color. And so those students are current sophomores, our first class. So in the next two years, we're going to start seeing the fruits of that labor in our community to create that greater pipeline that is truly representative of the students, because it's their own families that are going to be that pipeline. And so, you know, I can talk a lot about the other efforts that we're doing, but your question was specific to recruitment and retention. And I would just say, you know, the only other piece I've mentioned about retention is us spending a lot of time working with our staff to make sure they all feel, to Mayor's point, Mayor Hayes's point, welcome, supported, and safe in their position, in their community, when there may not be a group of 10 of them in a department, right? And so we run a lot of different, provide a lot of opportunities, and we can always do more, but provide opportunities to ensure they know how much we care about and support and want to make sure that they're successful.
Well, thank you all for those responses. I feel like I personally have a much better understanding of how the school districts work together, and I'm sure that our community participants do as well. Moving to the next question, we heard a lot of great feedback about the Arlington Heights Police Department. And nearly every person we talked with during those listening sessions mentioned that if they'd had a police mentioned that if they'd had a police encounter, it was proper and it was respectful. But the one thing that we did hear, um, pretty commonly, um, in the many interactions we've had with community members, is really similar to what we heard about the schools, that when people encounter someone, um, from the Arlington Heights Police Department, they feel that they don't see people who look like them. So I'm going to direct this question to Chief Takora and ask if you can share with us, um, what the police department's perspective is on recruitment and selection of officers? Any plans that you may have for re-envisioning policing as the village embraces the future and sustains welcomeness and unity?
I think you're muted, chief. You're muted, chief.
Let me try this again. Thanks for the question, Dr. Settles. Um, first, let me, uh, recognize the, the community members who spoke favorably about the police department during your listening sessions. Comments like that are always appreciated and the officers like to hear that because they like to know that their work is appreciated. So thank you. Um, a- as for recruiting, traditional police recruiting, um, typically involved posting a notice on the newspaper. And as they say in the Field of Dreams, they will come. Uh, by example, when I took the police test in 1985, there were 1,200 people that showed up for two jobs that were listed i- in the eight communities that participated in this consortium. Things have changed. Um, most recently, we've, we've transitioned from the, the newspaper notice to social media messaging, announcements on the village's website, uh, the, the testing vendor's website, uh, to include even a short video on local cable access, kind of promoting the police department, what we do and, and how you can go about joining our team. Uh, in 2018, our recruiting cycle, uh, there were almost 300 people that participated in the examination. This year, we only had 127 people that registered. Uh, of those 127 people that registered, 42 identified as non-white applicants. Um, it, it's concerning to us and we see a, a trend in the, in the Northwest suburbs that those numbers of interested parties are still on a decline. Uh, a town west of here had a test a couple of weeks ago. It had 30 people show up for an entrance exam, exam. It's, that's really disheartening and it just goes to show that what's on the front page of the paper is probably discouraging people from pursuing a career in law enforcement. Um, to, to try and take recruiting outside the box and in furtherance of the village's board, village board's goal to diversify, uh, the workplace, a village manager, Recklaus, uh, formed a working group comprised of Northwest suburban communities, uh, to review strategies aimed at increasing diversity in our police departments. One, one strategy, uh, that we, uh, identified was partnering with Harper College. Uh, Brad Grossman, uh, Professor Brad Grossman is the coordinator of the Law Enforcement Justice Program over there. And, and he came up with a, a solution where he would coordinate a, um, a workshop and, and through advertising and, and his word of mouth, we would try and, uh, identify, uh, minority candidates who'd be interested in pursuing a law enforcement career in, in the Northwest suburbs. And the, the speakers that we had lined up included, uh, a detective who would explain what a background is all about, a police and fire commissioner to give an idea of what the oral interview process is all about, a testing vendor who would give you a, a brief overview of what the entrance exam is all about and, and ways to study to complete the, the, uh, examination. Um, and, and a couple of police chiefs to give their perspective about what they're looking for for recruits to move policing into the future. So we're, we're thinking outside the box and when it comes down to it, we, we all cast a wide net. And a- as Dr. Schuler said, not everybody's welcome. We, we, we have a competitive process and the most qualified people get to join our team. And that's why the Northwest suburbs have some of the best police agencies i- in the state of Illinois a- and for that matter, uh, nationally. Um, a- as for re-envisioning, you know, Arlington, the Arlington Heights Police Department is, is proud of the fact that we're award-winning and we're a nationally accredited police department. Uh, due to our accreditation process, we, we consistently review our policies and we take a look into the future every day. And th- those two flags help us with our recruiting. Because when people say, uh, where am I going to dedicate 20 or 30 years of my life? I, I want to go to a police department like Arlington Heights that offers both lateral and vertical movement. A- and, um, you know, I think that's why we are very fortunate. Not only do we have an entry level process, but we also have a certified program where we engage officers that have been at other police departments for two, three, nine years. And, and they join our team and, and leave the team that they were on for a couple of years. So our, our recruiting i- is ongoing. Um, our vision is, is into the future to make sure that the Arlington Heights Police Department serves its community to the best of its ability. And, um, that, that's kind of how I would answer your question. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for your response. Um, so we have another question that has to do with the diversity gap. Um, a recurring theme that we heard, um, in the community listening sessions, rather, related to the diversity gap between the community and the government. And the demographics of Arlington Heights are changing. And some of the community members have expressed concerns that village government isn't keeping pace of the changing landscape in the community. Um, so I'm going to direct this question to the village manager. Mr. Recklos, um, what steps is the village taking to enhance diversity and inclusion within all of the ranks of village government in addition to the police department?
First, I want to say, you know, we certainly don't think we have all the answers. And, and we know that we have a ways to go in this area. And, you know, I think that's why we're having, doing a diversity, equity, and inclusion audit. And that's why we're, you know, I'm, you know, I'm learning things tonight from our community partners in terms of things that they're doing. And that's why we're engaging with other Northwest suburban communities to talk about, you know, as a group, what are the barriers to entry that we're seeing and how can we eliminate them? Um, as part of this process, we're talking to our own employees, including our diverse employees, about, you know, how has your experience been here? What can we do to make it a, is, is welcoming of a place as it can be? And, and, you know, how, how can we make sure that we're not excluding good qualified candidates from any of our processes? We have made steps in this direction and, and we have, um, increased the number of diverse candidates that we've hired in the last several months, but we know we still have a ways to go in that regard. Um, I think a lot of it is who you recruit to and who you recruit with and what your, the public perception is of your area. Um, as, as Dave mentioned earlier, um, we know from talking to people that there, that a lot of people from different areas may not think that Arlington Heights is for them. And we need to kind of get them to think differently about that and think differently about our organization. And that's, that's not something you can do with a simple program or a flyer or something. That's something we have to do hard work on to make sure that the image of our community is reflective of who we are and what our values are. And, um, you know, that, that takes hard work. We are going to more job fairs. We are going to recruit in places we normally wouldn't. Um, the police department, I know, for example, has been going to city colleges for recruitment efforts. And thus far, we have not had a lot of bites, um, along those lines. But we know that those are things that we have to continue to do and it's kind of a, a long haul. Um, I've, I've tried to partner with people in our community. They have relationships outside of the community and a network, talking to, uh, folks that, um, you know, uh, represent diverse populations. And I've gone, attended a few meetings of those groups outside of Arlington Heights, just to say, hey, Arlington Heights is here. We're trying to, you know, broaden the base of candidates, you know, what can we do? And so, um, a lot of that is we want to listen and hear what folks have to say tonight and, and, you know, see what recommendations come out of this process, but we know we still have work to do in this area.
Thank you for that. Um, Mayor Hayes, I see that you have your hand up.
I do, Tanya, thank you. And I, I think this question goes to, uh, more than just our employees and staff, uh, individuals within the village. I think it goes to elected representatives and appointed, uh, board and commission members as well. At least I've heard that over the past six months or so. And so, um, I meet with Cub Scout and Girl Scout groups and, uh, second graders in our elementary schools all the time in their, uh, government section and, uh, and how to be a good citizen. And they always ask me, what is it, what do you have to do to be mayor? And I tell them, there's only two requirements. You have to be 18 years old and you have to live in the village of Arlington Heights. And I said, that's it. You don't have to be any certain color. You don't have to be a millionaire. You don't have to be a college graduate. Uh, you know, so it's open to anyone and everyone who wants to serve, uh, the village of Arlington Heights. And we certainly welcome, uh, anyone who wants to serve in many, many different capacities. And you don't, uh, have to be an elected representative. We have about 200 positions on our appointed boards and commissions. And, uh, myself and the village board have worked very hard to try to make sure that our appointed representatives on these boards and commissions reflect the community as a whole. And so I can tell you from, uh, being the person who makes these recommendations that it's really about 50/50 right now between male and female on these boards and commissions. And we're doing all we can, especially over the last six to, to 12 months or so, to, uh, increase, uh, the diversity and, and how, um, these individuals look in terms of reflecting our community and the makeup of our community. And so, uh, I would encourage anyone who wants to serve in either, either an appointed or elected capacity to, uh, to do so because, uh, the village of Arlington Heights wants to see you get involved. So thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you for the, for, for those comments. Um, we have one more question, um, tonight for the panelists. And that is, that is around the idea that creating a welcoming community is really a shared obligation between residents, businesses, village government, and governance. And so this last question, before we get to the open question forum from community members, is really directed to each member of our panel. From your perspective, in the position that you hold, what is the one thing that community members can do to help promote diversity and inclusion within Arlington Heights in their roles, their important roles as members of the community?
Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and start just to kick it off. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and I would just refer back to my opening remarks. I think the most important thing is that anyone who comes to Arlington Heights, whether they're just visiting, they're driving through, they're looking for a new home here, they're shopping at one of our businesses, eating in one of our restaurants, uh, that they feel welcome here. And so it's very simple to me. I would just ask everyone to live up to our motto, be a good neighbor and treat everyone and their property with the dignity and respect they deserve.
I could, if I can jump in, um, you know, one of the things that, one of the phrases as we've been going on this journey in the village, you know, I've been lurking, learning more and more about these issues. And one of the phrases that has struck me is belongingness. And, you know, I think it's, it's, people tend to think of these issues sometimes as so, you know, well, you know, they weren't excluded, people weren't excluded from the process, so they were welcome. And so we don't have a problem here. And I think we all have experiences, those, those situations where you've, you know, maybe moved to a new community or you've gone to a new, new organization. And, you know, while no one is telling you, you can't participate and you can't be part of it, you still have the sense that you don't belong. And I think that we need to do as residents and as community members, we really need to be conscious of that. And when we go to events or when we have new neighbors or we have new, new people coming to our school, what are we doing to help those folks feel like they belong here and feel like they should be part of this? And, and, you know, I think it's a lot of, it's, it's not, you know, a couple of big things. I think it's a lot of small things and it's a lot of things that we can do, um, in those, you know, minor interactions to increase the sense of belongingness to, to members of our community. I think that's something that all of us can do, aside from kind of the big policy things that, you know, maybe those of us on this panel, uh, can help put into effect.
And I'll just add to what, uh, Mayor Hayes and, and Randy has shared. From a school perspective, a lot of times we meet our neighbors through our kids. We meet, uh, other community members through the school events. Um, and so same message, welcome, um, each other into your homes. Meet your children's classmates. Invite different friends, um, of your children, uh, to play dates. Um, so you can meet each other and, and can meet your families. Um, our kids, um, grow up so excited to meet more and more friends. Um, and so we can follow their lead and, and help facilitate that. And then as adults, meet more people in our community and, and welcome more people as well.
I'd like to just step in here also. Um, I want to just speak for, on behalf of the library. Thank you for, uh, having me be part of this panel tonight. Um, the library takes diversity and inclusion very seriously. It's been ingrained in our culture for quite some time. Uh, our board actually, uh, adopted, um, that as part of our vision and values back in 2017. And we've done a lot, uh, to work toward that. Um, one thing that I think the residents can do to, um, kind of help this along is, uh, and this is kind of a shameless plug, but, uh, become aware of what the library has to offer. Uh, I think if you look at our program calendar and resources, you'll find, uh, many opportunities to be part of community conversations, continue to learn about other cultures. Uh, we recently hosted the New York Times, uh, bestselling author of How to Be an Anti-Racist by, uh, or Dr. Ibram X. Kendi. Uh, we weren't able to record that program, but you can find other programs on our YouTube, um, site that are, uh, similar. Uh, also, we have, uh, resources on our website about anti-racism. So if you go to our website, ahml.info/anti-racism, there's resources there available. And we kind of feel that our role is really to provide resources and opportunities uh, for learning and engagement in an inclusive atmosphere. We want to be the facilitator and a safe place for civic discussions and really celebrate our community's diversity and, uh, and open exchange of different points of view. Um, we've also gone, you know, through great lengths to, um, really look at even outside of race, um, accessibility. Uh, we have a department that is, uh, dedicated to, um, our senior and accessible, uh, um, demographic. Uh, we have an English as a second language department that is e- exceptional. And, um, we're actually moving that department down onto our first floor to, uh, make it more accessible to, um, to everyone. So, um, take a look at what your library has to offer. I think, um, that might be a good place to find resources.
So, um, I want to just add, uh, a little bit from the school perspective. Um, you know, I think one of the things that I think we have to be very honest about is these are, um, extremely difficult conversations to have. Um, you know, when we are coming from the, the, the various backgrounds and places that we all have, um, and then we come into a place where we're all, our children are together. And, um, what I have found of the course of my career is this is very rarely a kid problem. Um, you know, uh, kids really do gravitate towards each other and, and, you know, they are some of the, you want to talk about, about diversity, um, shining brightest, go into one of our classrooms. Um, because that's where we see, um, the, the kind of, of ideal of, of integration and fairness. And, um, you know, just kind of, you know, kids have a really good sense of, of, of how to, to do that. And we, we really should take more examples from them. Um, oftentimes it's when the adults start to try and have some of these conversations where we start to run into some difficulty. Um, and I think one of the things that, um, you know, there's a, a, a bit of, of, of risk, right? That's, that's attached to really digging into having some of these conversations, um, whether it be emotional risk, whether it be political risk, whatever the case may be. Um, in District 21, you know, we are embarking upon, um, you know, a, 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 really a deep conversation and, and, and action process around equity, around what kind of, of work, and it is work, that we need to do as a district to ensure that people, um, feel that sense of inclusivity. Um, we do have communities that are, for lack of a better term, estranged from each other, um, whether it be because of a language barrier, whether it's because of a socioeconomic or a geographical barrier. And it's really incumbent upon us as, as, as school leaders, um, to try and take those walls down. Um, that's not always the easiest thing to do. Um, and so, you know, as we are working towards performing an equity audit within our district and really trying to gather some data, some information, some perception information about what are those things that we need to target, then we need to be able to, to, to feel like as a community, we can go and lean into those discussions, um, and do it in a constructive manner. Um, and I think from a, a community involvement perspective, um, you know, really, those people that are, are on this call right now, um, that have been joining in, um, in, in these discussions, it's a huge piece of the puzzle, uh, to be able for people. both at the community level and in leadership, to be able to move these conversations forward. And, you know, it's it's it's, you know, it's not going to be easy work. And there's always going to be the risk attached to it. But anything that's good never usually comes easy.
So, Tanya, from the Park District's perspective, you know, children learn lots of things in school and in other places. But you know what? There are many amazing lessons to be learned on the basketball court or out in the baseball field. And so we learn, I think, amazing lessons about how to treat other people, how to respect other people and the things that are important that other people bring to the table. And so I think the one thing that I would say that residents could do, a couple of things, but one major thing would be is get your, you know, get children involved in team and group activities so that they learn how to respect and understand other people's perspectives. And the other thing, as a mother of four, I would say that, you know, all these messages start at home. You know, they happen at school, they happen on the baseball field, they happen on the basketball court, but they start at home. And and as much as we think maybe our our values are not reflected through our children, they most definitely are. And so I would encourage people to get their children involved in as many activities as they can, as well as remembering that our messages that we, you know, speak in our homes come come out loud and clear through our children.
The only thing I would add to what my colleague said, Tanya, is I think it's really important for each individual to only own their own truth and only own their own journey. And I don't think it benefits anyone to tell somebody else that you know how they feel. Because if you haven't lived that truth, whether it be from a racial equity perspective, whether it be from a special education, disability, ableism perspective, LGBTQ perspective, you don't know their experience because you have not walked in their walk. So seeking to understand and allowing people to live their own truth, I think is really important to look to being able to take that next step as individuals and therefore as a community.
Great advice. Yeah, live your own truth and don't make assumptions. So do we have anybody else on the panel who would like to talk or offer an idea or suggestion about what community members can do in their role in in the community to advance inclusion and diversity?
I was going to add, sort of piggyback on the idea of the volunteerism. Certainly, that that's an opportunity to broaden our reach in the community and our visibility in the community. So we're certainly looking for individuals, again, shameless plug, for substitute teaching or working in the schools or certainly volunteering. Carrie, I think, said something really important about watching and being mindful of our own influence. And I, for me, the word that jumped into my mind was, you know, being mindful of our language, that words really matter. And we can choose to be divisive or we can choose to be inclusive. We can choose to be accepting or we can choose to be closed minded. And so that's not to say that we'll understand, as Dave said, everyone's perspective. But when we think about diversity frequently and and rightfully so, it's often based on a on an ethnic perspective and racial perspective. But we also recognize that it's just difference of thought as well. It's difference of life experience, LGBTQ differently abled individuals, all of those types of differences that we encounter in our society. We have to be mindful of our language. And that was the one word that that came to me. So I just think having conversations like this is a really important thing to do.
I agree. It's why we're all here. Chief, I see you're there.
Yes, Tanya, thank you. I was just going to offer up a another shameless plug. It's unfortunate that we're in the COVID environment, but the Citizen Police Academy is a great way for members of the community to get a behind the curtains look at our police department. Not only do you get to see what we do eight hours a day, 24 hours a day, but we have the opportunity to bounce ideas off of you, members of the community, and get positive or negative feedback about the direction that we're going. So it's it's a two way communication. And that way, it helps guide, shape and direct the police department. So if anybody's thinking about taking a better look at the police department, please take a look at our website as soon as the COVID environment softens and we start up the Citizen Police Academy. I'd love to see those classes full again. Thank you.
Of course. Panelists, any any other, any other comments, any closing thoughts that you'd like to add? Well, I would like to say to each of you, thank you. And huge gratitude to you, to members of the panel for sharing your thoughts and your perspectives with the community. So for this next portion of the town hall, what we'd like to do is open the floor to speakers from from the community, people who have comments or questions that they'd like to share with the various members of our panel. And just as a reminder to you, speakers are limited to two minutes for their for their comments. When you hit that two minute point, we actually will, we we will mute your microphone so that we give as many people as much opportunity as we possibly can to share those important ideas and and values and perspectives that you have. To submit a question for us to read, which we can start doing as soon as I finish talking, there are a few things that you can do. You can use the chat box. If you'd like us to read a question to the panel, we would be happy to do that for you. If you would like to speak, you can indicate that in the chat box. Or the very best way to make sure that you have an opportunity to speak is to use the raise your hand feature in Zoom. And we will acknowledge community members to speak in the order or the closest approximation of the order that we can as we receive your request. In some cases, when we receive multiple requests on on topics that are similar, we may, we may consolidate those into one, just again, to make sure that we get as much information flowing and as much dialogue as as possible. So when it is your turn to speak, we will actually send you a message so that you can unmute your microphone and address the panel directly. And as a last note, we appreciate all input and perspectives. But please, please be respectful of the panel and your fellow community members. And so with that, let's get started with, let's get started with the next, the next question. So I will ask my kaleidoscope colleagues, do we have any hands up that need to be acknowledged first?
No, we don't.
I think we do have, it looks like among attendees, I'm seeing five hands up.
I see.
Okay, I just seen it pop up, yes. There are numerous questions inside as well.
So let's start with 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 Keith. Since Keith, you have, you were at the top of the list, we will move to Keith first. And if you haven't unmuted your microphone, please go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Suttles. I appreciate the chance to speak tonight. And thank you to everyone for taking your time to listen to us here. My name is Keith Moons. I've been in Arlington Heights for 28 years and have raised my kids here. But in my opinion, you know, I think to promote DEI, I put the challenge to the village board. I think they can do a lot to introduce and enact legislation that's directed to help people that are below the median income line in Arlington Heights, which is about 85,000 a year. I think by doing that would promote DEI. It would send a welcome message to the outside world and attract the people below that median income, which is who we're looking for. I mean, some of the things the board can do, scrub the municipal code and get rid of any exclusionary zoning that may be still there, overwhelming resident support for the Cook County minimum wage, but the board did not pass that. They could reintroduce that. The same thing with paid sick leave. Reroute some police funds into the community services. And affordable housing, it's a great, great topic here. I'm proud to say we are one of seven towns that have that. And as Mr. Reklaus said, new rental properties have to include some units, except for senior housing. Our new ordinance has excluded senior housing, affordable housing. So I think that's a area we need to look at. We still got inclusion and implementation problems on the affordable housing ordinance. And I think that if the board would just take these steps, legislation, enact them, focus on supporting the folks that are below the median income level in town, I think that'll send a welcoming message to the outside world and would just naturally promote DEI. Thank you for your time. You all have a good evening and stay safe, everyone, please. It's that virus is everywhere.
Keith, thank you. Thank you for your for your comments. The next speaker that I see on the list is Wendy. Wendy, if you haven't, if you haven't already unmuted, please go ahead.
Hi, this is Wendy Dunnington. Can you hear me okay?
I can, Wendy. Hi, thank you.
Great, thanks. I'm wondering, what is the villages, including the Park District and the library and the police department, what is the village's annual percentage goal of the amount of goods and services that are purchased from women and minority owned businesses?
I can answer that. Thank you, Wendy. That's a, that's a great question. To be blunt, it's not something that we have a set program on currently. So I think it's a fair point. And, you know, as we kind of embark upon this, this journey and this discussion, that's why we're having this meeting is to discuss issues like that. But it's not something that we are currently tracking a lot of our, a lot of our programming and a lot of the construction projects that we do. We do have, you know, we do require that our our contractors be equal opportunity employers and such. But beyond that, it's not something that we actively pursue currently. But I think it's something certainly we can discuss going forward.
Hi, Wendy. We, my answer would be from the park district's perspective, it's same as the villages. You know, we are not tracking that currently, but it is a very good point and I appreciate you bringing it up.
Same from the library, we don't track that, but something we would, we would explore. We did have semicolon books recently, sell copies of Dr. Kendi's book at a recent program and that's a female owned business.
Thank you. Thank you, all the panelists. So the next person who's asked to talk is is Heidi Graham. Heidi, if you haven't been muted, please go ahead.
Yes, hello, Heidi Graham. Can you hear me? Hi, I see. Thank you so much. You know, all of our, especially our elected officials. Most of you know, I'm not only am I a 25 plus year resident of Arlington Heights, but I'm also president of the local League of Women Voters. And the question that we have that league is very interested in is communication and recruitment for our commissions and for our leadership positions. It's fairly clear as we look at this panel of leaders. It's one color. I know that this is something that our league struggles and grapples with, but it is not something that can be done just by sitting back. So what proactive measures are being taken to increase people of color in leadership positions?
Well, let me start off with that, Heidi. Thank you and thank you for your leadership of the league. I explained a little bit about that, at least my philosophy on that in terms of talking about. There's really no prohibition to serving an elected representative or an appointed boards or commissions. It's open to anyone and everyone. I try to make it a point at village board meetings, especially after we swear in a new board or commission member to advise our community that we're taking applications. So unfortunately, the the bad part is that we don't have a lot of vacancies right now because so many people want to serve the village in one way or another. So I think out of 200 positions, we've only got four or five vacancies right now. And so, you know, we're, we're always interested in anyone who wants to serve in whatever capacity we can fit them in. And I've been very thankful for the village board's help and assistance in finding people. Probably at least half of the the people that I've appointed in the last year have been recommendations from village board members. And so that's the way to do it, to get the word out that these positions are available. Unfortunately, again, there's not a lot of vacancies right now. But there's really no impediment to people serving the village if they want to serve.
Well, I would disagree that there isn't an impediment. For many women, there is a definite impediment because they, there is no provided childcare.
Well, I don't disagree with you that in that, Heidi, but the village is not going to provide the childcare.
Well, I would argue that that might be something that if we are really going to be dedicated to diversity, equity and inclusion, that maybe we have to take a look at that. Women are frequently asked to volunteer their time, certainly far more than men are. We give away our time and we are underpaid and undervalued. And to have more women and people of color in leadership positions, we have to consider that women bear the brunt of not just childcare, but adult parent care as well.
Heidi, from the district's perspective, I share the mayor's appreciation for the amazing job you do leading the league. We, we went out when Wheeling's principal position was open. We just went actively looking at, you know, great candidates. We found the Elgin man of the year, who was the Elgin principal. And I would, there was no way I was going to let him say no to that Wheeling job. You know, same thing with Kier stealing him from River Trails and bringing him over to the district office for our specialized school principal. And I'm really proud to say this year of our new administrators and supervisors, over half of them were women and and administrators of color. And again, it wasn't because we were only looking to hire individuals that looked like that. We found the best candidates who represent our student body.
Yeah, if I could just jump in, I think that that there's, I think the the point that you bring up in terms of being able to make it a more friendly environment for people that have children or that are taking care of parents, to be able to be actively involved is is well taken. You know, one of the things that I think we have really experienced with COVID is how big of an issue that is, not just for for parents, but for the parents of our of our students, but also for our staff. And so I think that there is space to really be able to to have some conversations about, you know, how do we marshal some additional resources to, you know, provide, you know, that access to work? And so I know one of the things that we have tried to do is to, when we are having in a pre-COVID world and in a post-COVID world, when we get back to it, and we will, when we are are having those those kinds of you know, programs or or interactions where we're asking parents to 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 be part of it, is to have childcare, you know, some of our staff that can volunteer or or be paid or or some, you know, high school students that need National Honor Society, you know, service hours. Those are always a really, really, really good resource for us to be able to provide that that kind of childcare. You know, we have our family learning program that that, you know, provides a lot of learning opportunities for parents and and childcare is something that we partner with Harper to be able to do. So, I mean, I think that i- in in putting that into the calculus of how you do these things and kind of marshalling the resources, I think that that, you know, for me, I I take your point very well, Heidi, that it's something that that I think we definitely need to always keep at the forefront of the of the thinking. Doesn't mean that we're always going to be able to meet everybody's need, but it's it's and how we're planning to, you know, how we do some of those things.
I could jump into, you know, I think when we talk about childcare and talking about reassessing of kind of our definition of work, I think that's something that COVID has identified that the world has changed. And, you know, we're, you know, one of the challenges that we run into as well, some of our employees have had the opportunity to work from home, work remotely and have done so successfully. And sometimes, you know, childcare factors into that equation where they may prefer to work from home. And they may, what they do and how they do it has changed somewhat in light of the fact that they have young children at home. And the the difficulty is, is some of our jobs allow us to accommodate that in. And the the difficulty is, is some of our jobs allow us to accommodate that in some form or fashion. Some of them do not. If you're a public works employee working out in the field or a police officer or firefighter, there really is no ability for you to work remotely because you're working with the physical world. If you're someone that's, you know, working in an office, there may be some ability for us to do that. And I think all of us in as organizations, and I think particularly in government, let's be honest, we have a tendency to try to write rules for everything. And if I think there's one thing the last nine months have taught us is sometimes you have to rethink how you're doing things and look at counterintuitive solutions. And I think that this whole experience, you know, I think, you know, while a lot of terrible things have come from it, obviously, one of the things that I think for our organization that it's done is it's allowed us to look at things from a different perspective. And I think, Heidi, some of your points about childcare and about the disparate impacts of of these types of situations on, you know, women versus men, people with children, people who don't have children, people at different ages, people that have elder care issues, those are all issues that are much more front and center for all of us that manage organizations than they were maybe a year ago. And so we do need to continue talking about these things.
And I would just offer, Mr. Mayor and Randy, if there's any interest, we would be happy to engage in a conversation about our National Honor Society or our kids who need service for the Harper Promise Program, maybe providing some some childcare for your meetings if that's of interest to you to discuss that further. We'd be happy to engage in that conversation in District 214.
That's great. Thanks, Dave.
Well, this has been a great conversation, but I also see that we have a number of a number of community members who are waiting very patiently. And I believe next up is Scott Briggs, who who has asked to have some time to talk.
Great, thank you, Tanya. Can you hear me okay, everybody?
We can, thank you.
Very good. Thank you so much. As Tanya mentioned, Scott Briggs. My family and I are residents in the Northgate neighborhood in Arlington Heights, aligned to District 21. So first off, Dr. Connolly, thank you for the great work you do in providing a phenomenal district for our children in these unusual times and even normal times. It's always been a fantastic experience and do wish you all a fantastic holiday season. I do have two questions, one specifically for Superintendent Schuler and then one for the balance of the panels. So Superintendent Schuler, if I can, regarding the Grow Your Own program. I got a sense that it's a program designed to create a forum by which minority candidates may have an opportunity to work their way into the district. It sounds like it might be at the collegiate level because it may be college graduates that might have a chance to then move into the district. If you could clarify.
Yeah, Scott, thank you for that because sometimes I get so excited about it, I can't explain it in a way that people understand, so I apologize. It's open to all students to sign up. You know how like Division One athletes do a Division One signing day? We do a I'm going to be a teacher day, future educator day, we call it. And everybody gets on a stage or they go to the gym and we invite all the elementary superintendents over and everybody gets a pen and they all sign saying, I'm committed to being a teacher and to join the Ed Pathway. And that's usually the end of their freshman year in high school or the end of their sophomore year in high school. So then their sophomore, junior, senior year, they end up taking education courses that are dual credit between both. So they earn high school credit and they earn college credit. And that's where they get those four experiences at the elementary, middle school, secondary and high school level. Lori Bine in 25 has been awesome enough to even allow our kids to come in and do professional development for her teachers, which is always a really fun experience for both the teachers and our students. And then, yes, then they go off to their post-secondary institution. If it's Eastern Illinois or National Lewis, they've agreed to take time off of their post-secondary program and then we'll allow them to come back and student teach in in our community. It's not solely for the purpose of of ensuring we have more teachers of color in the district. But I'm really happy to see that we have all students and a majority of the individuals who signed up this past year who were students of color. Does that help?
It does. That that actually was not my question, but I appreciate you you elaborating on the program. The question, if I can, is in the same vein, might there be a program in place that would actually look to advance employees of color into leadership positions as opposed to taking sort of college level and high school? So that's my question to you. If I can get out the question to the panel as well, and then I'll let you all take the floor. And that is broadly, how is success being defined as it relates to diversity, equity and inclusion in Arlington Heights? And how is it being measured along the way to get a sense that we're moving in the right direction? Thank you all.
You bet. So Scott, we do run programs, leadership programs for individuals that may be teachers leaning into administration or initial administrators into that next level. We're always looking at that and providing opportunities for that. So that's an absolute yes. Success for us is related to student achievement and are students achieving? And are we closing gaps? And I'm thrilled to tell, you know, the Arlington Heights community, everybody on this call, we have completely or just about completely eliminated the achievement gap related to dual credit courses. And we've got tons of dual credit courses and all of our students, regardless of of race, gender, socioeconomic status are being as successful across the board, which is awesome. Now, we're not there everywhere. I'm not suggesting that, but we are getting there and we're making progress. So I'll yield my time to my colleagues.
I was going to add one thing that I have found to be really powerful connected to the Ed Academy and Ed Pathway, but but also to your point, internally with our own professionals. And that is that there's a there's an element, there's a philosophy in it, a mindset in it that you actively go out and tap kids on the shoulder who maybe never thought about being a teacher before. Or in my case, relative to leadership within the district, you know, going up to a teacher who may have never thought before about, you know, getting into administration or getting into a leadership role and telling them, you know, I see something in you. I can, I I see that leadership potential in you. I see that teacher quality in you. And being proactive in reaching out to diverse individuals rather than being passive and waiting for folks to come back. And that's, I know for for those of us in our in the education realm, the our superintendent group has talked quite a bit about being really active in growing our own, encouraging our own. So the types of programs that Dave described, that they exist is the first step, obviously, and is a is a huge accomplishment. But beyond that, to make sure that there there's a, you know, there's a waiting list to get in there, that would be the ideal for me, success, that we're able to encourage so many people to participate actively, particularly those in underrepresented groups.
So one of the things that I would I would just kind of add to what's already been said is is from District 21's perspective, in terms of how we're measuring our success, we have a lot of work to do, just point blank. Part of the reason that we have spent the better part of the last two and a half years focusing on really doing, first of all, a comprehensive systems assessment where we worked with with partner, outside partners, Consortium for Educational Change, and really touched every surface of the district to kind of identify our strengths, our weaknesses, our opportunities and our threats. And then springboarding into a comprehensive strategic planning effort was really because we needed to kind of define what our priorities needed to be. And so as we have done that and are moving into the action planning process, it is something where unfortunately it slowed down a little bit because of COVID, but we're still working. We need to to work collaboratively with our community to define what those areas of success look like. So it's not just about student achievement. It's certainly a big piece of it. And closing the achievement gaps that we do have is is a major, major, major priority. But it's also about how our kids connect with our community. And so when we're talking about pipelines, it's also about my kids going to 214, making sure that I'm creating a pipeline for our kids to move into the career pathways that are going to allow them to re, you know, to be integrating into the community in very positive ways. That in and of itself, I think, is going to be something that will be a value added to our entire area. So, you know, we're at the beginning of our of our work and we've got a lot of work ahead of us. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you. Thank you for that conversation, but we still do have some 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 community members who would like to talk. And the next is John. I am going to, John Suplet has been waiting on hold very patiently for us. John, if you haven't unmuted.
I should be unmuted.
You are unmuted. Thank you for being so patient.
Thank you. Well, you're absolutely welcome. It settles. And thank you for the panel taking your time out this evening on this important discussion, which affects everybody who lives in the community. When I look at the panel, what I see are are dedicated public servants who are looking to solve a problem that is pervasive across our community, not just ours, but is pervasive across the area. And in that sense, I think we all deserve a great deal of credit for taking this head on. It was mentioned that the conversation's tough, or it's only as tough as we make it. The fact that we're having a conversation, we're initiating the conversation is the first step. And as we become more comfortable with the language, we'll find it much easier to have these conversations. And as we become more inclusive of our membership, we'll find it much easier to have these conversations. And that won't be an issue anymore.
I have a quick question, a snush.
I I heard, you know, Heidi's point earlier, and I think it was very important that she that she raised a question that has been in front of us for decades. And yet we got a variety of responses, but the point is, is that we've talked a lot about race, ethnicity, but we haven't talked about LGBTQIA. We haven't talked about people with ability issues, both physical and mental. And as Mr. Driscoll pointed out, this has been part of the library's strategic plan since 2017. EDI has been and has a home at the library and always will. The question then is, where is the strategy on your intergovernmental organizations strategies as well? Where's this issue on your strategies? And realizing we as a community won't make any progress unless we do it collectively and collaboratively. But just as we are here this evening, participating on an intergovernmental discussion, this this issue has to become part of an intergovernmental strategy that will affect the entire village. So with that in mind, what would be the next step?
I can I can jump in on that, you know, I and I and I agree with you, John. I mean, I think those are, you know, diversity is a diverse topic. And, you know, we know and we we do have LGBTQ employees within our organization. And part of the assessment that's being done right now is engaging with them and in in trying to understand how is the experience of working here been, you know, for them as members of that community. We are doing a disabilities accommodation assessment now because we know there that in some of our work areas and so forth, there may be areas where if I'm, if I was a person who had disabilities, I may come in and say, oh, I don't know if I can work here. And so we really need to look at these issues broadly with the goal of getting as many good candidates as we can. I mean, one of the things I tell my employees that, just as an analogy, is, you know, the village is lucky. We are professionally a very diverse organization. We have police officers, we have engineers, we have planners, we have social workers. And that diversity is really a strength. If everybody in the organization was an engineer, we wouldn't solve our problems as well. And in being a member of the LGBT community or being a member, being a minority, let's face it, it's going to give you a different perspective in our society than it would be if you weren't. And we're foolish not to capitalize on that and try to identify, you know, have individuals in, join our organization that have those perspectives because we're going to eliminate blind spots for ourselves and be better as a service provider. So I agree and part of what we're embarking upon is to do just that, and that's part of this process. And so I don't, you know, we're doing diagnosis before prescription here and but that's definitely part of what we're trying to diagnose is is how we can improve in those areas as a village.
And and John, the intergovernmental nature of this effort is critical. And that's why we even invited all of these members, these panelists that you see here with us tonight. Because as I said in my opening statement, they are part of the team to move us forward in this regard. So it wouldn't make any sense for just the village to have moved forward in this effort if no one else is. And so we need to coordinate our efforts, move together as a team to do all we can in this regard. So it's a good point.
Thank you, Mayor. Our our next speaker is Mr. George Mato. George Mato has also been very patient and has been waiting on hold. Mr. Mato, what would you like to say?
It's not, it won't be George Mato. It'll be my wife Kathy Mato would like to say something.
Okay, thank you. Okay. My question is, can we envision anything being done to encourage and facilitate more homeownership by people of color in Arlington Heights? We have a wide variety of housing options in this village, but low diversity in who actually lives here. And I would like to know if if anything, anybody could see anything to encourage and change that and do anything?
Well, let me just start, Kathy. It's a good question. And we've we've addressed this, I think, over the past year or so in response to concerns from you and and George and others that we're not doing enough. But as we've explained, Mr. Recklaus has talked about inclusionary housing ordinance. And I've talked about being a more welcoming community. And it's all of that working together to make people feel comfortable to come live and work here. And so and it's a team effort. But I've heard from realtors who who tell me all the time that people want to live here. They are coming to Arlington Heights because of the quality of life here, the quality of our schools. And so, but it's a team effort and we have to all work together in this regard.
I I hear you, Tom, and I agree and appreciate that. I would just like, you know, maybe to know what more we could do. Is it with realtors? Is it with banks? Is it with? You know, I really don't know. I'm I'm not a Realtor. I just know that this is a really great place to live and and that we have a wide variety of housing. And I would like to know what I could do to, and, you know, to bring about a a change in the fact that it's such a high, I think the highest in the northwest suburb area around here in Arlington Heights, as we hear, you know, people say. And I would I would like to know what what I could do, what we, what neighbors, what ordinary residents could do to share our our nice town.
Well, I, you know, we talked about this, Kathy, but just get the word out to your friends or neighbors in other communities that Arlington Heights is a welcoming place. And, you know, we're we're looking to invite people of any color to come live in our community, come work in our community. We're open to anyone and everyone. And so I, and we appreciate your help, all of our residents helping getting that word out.
Thank you. I'll do my best.
Thank you. Were there other, did you have another question from the Mato family?
No, that was.
I thought I heard talking.
Excuse me, I have, as long as my name is Jarvis, it's George Mato. And, you know, we're here, we're here for a reason. And, you know, by listing the things, I almost wonder, do we really have a problem? And by problem, I mean diversity and inclusion. And maybe problem too strong a word. It might might connude something wrong or or whatever. I don't know. But we are here and we are discussing this and we are not really talking about it. I mean, I think there there either we have a problem or a difficulty or we don't. Is there an elephant in the room that we're not acknowledging? Is there something about the image of Arlington Heights that we give it? I mean, we've lived here for 43 years and we absolutely love Arlington Heights. I mean, there is no question about that. And I actually love the police force. I love seeing a police car. I love it. However, I have this this feeling that something is remiss. And that's why I think I'm thrilled for this town hall. What I view it as, we view it as a kind of just a kickoff. And we have to start discussing things like zoning, things like loans, things like affordable housing. I went to a planning committee meeting last night and there was confusion as far as the fair I went to a planning committee meeting last night, and there was confusion as far as the fair the fair housing amendment. And does it apply? Does it not apply? I mean, and this is for a project that's three or four or five months into its its process. And, you know, and I think it is urgent that we start confronting things like this. This, I'm not sure what it is, but it's there. We all know it's there. And I think we have to start talking about it and not, you'll forgive me, dancing around the issue. That's, I'm finished now.
Oh, thank you very much for your comment. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Randy, go ahead.
Oh, no, I I was gonna say, I mean, I think these are good comments, and and I think that, you know, like we're saying, this is really just the start of a conversation. And, you know, one of the things that we talked about on an organization level and certainly applies on a community level is, we really wanted to develop some forums and some vocabulary to talk about these issues in a meaningful way. And that was really one of the goals of this whole process. And, you know, obviously, we're not going to solve all these problems tonight. But I think that that we can identify issues that we need to continue talking about, George. And and I think that that, you know, that this is this is appropriate. And the fact that we have this much representation from the government agencies still in the community and this many attendees suggests that this is an important topic that the community wants to discuss and and look at what, you know, what are the barriers and what can we do about them? But but no, I think you're you're on point.
Thank you. We have one more, one more person who's had their hand up, and again, very patient. And if you haven't unmuted yourself, please go ahead and 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 talk to the group.
Thank you very much tonight, and thank you, panelists, for for doing this this evening. I think this is a very important discussion and very positive. You know, one great way to get the word out about how welcoming we are in Arlington Heights and, Randy, a great way to structure putting together those forums you were just talking about would be to establish a diversity, equity, and inclusion commission. It'd be another great way to get volunteers participating with, since we don't have a lot of open spaces left in existing commissions. It would send a strong statement to both the Arlington Heights community as well as to potential recruits that were committed to an ongoing effort to be even more welcoming. Would the village be willing to commit to establishing such a commission?
That'd be something that the village board would have to consider. And, you know, we're at the very beginning stages of this, and we're going to be taking the input from these meetings as well as the recommendations of Kaleidoscope at the end of the process. And and at that point, we'll be kind of making decisions on, you know, what we want to do going forward. But I mean, you know, that's a suggestion that's been made before and certainly something that the village board can consider.
Thank you for that. I misspoke. We actually have a couple more people who who would like to talk. Janice, if you haven't unmuted yourself, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Janice Krensky, and I am on the, I'm the president of the District 59 Board of Education as well as the NSSEO Governing Board. And I really want to tell you that I appreciate your commitment to this cause and hearing from all of you. I think it's really, really important. District 59 has been on this journey for a very long time. We have people who speak 70 different languages in the homes of our families. That's seven zero. So and I know that, Michael, your district is very similar to ours as far as the diversity and the challenges. And there's a lot that needs to be done still. And one of the things I'd like to encourage all of you to look at is to continue to look at yourselves and make sure that you really understand what it means to have a culture that is white dominant and how it influences every single thing that we do. And as leaders, you have an opportunity to try to change the people that you supervise, who really aren't following through or getting the message in the deepest way that is required to make this change happen. I have been a social activist since I was eight years old, and some of my family friends, when I was a child, were discriminated against when they went to pick up the keys for a rental house on Cape Cod in Massachusetts, and they were told that the house was already rented. And I was beside myself with anger and upset that our family friends, because of the color of their skin, were discriminated against in that way. And things like that have colored my look and my care and everything I do. And I do think that you all are starting on this journey. Some of you are further along than others. But you still have a lot to learn to make sure that you really understand what we're trying to do here. It's not really about hiring another person of color, which is important, but it's not.
Janet, I'm sorry. Thank you for your, thank you for your thoughts, and thank you for your contribution. But we've actually exceeded the the two-minute limit. And, oh, no, that it's it's okay. I, you know, we appreciate passion. We have another speaker, Jim, if you're available and you haven't already unmuted yourself, please go ahead.
I actually, what I just wanted to do is just make a, something towards a final comment as as things were winding down. And and that is that the majority of these of these leaders, community leaders and that are on the screen here, I've worked with through various organizations that I've been a either a president of a board or whatever. And I I find them all to have what I would call the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish here. And and I I also believe that this is a great way of going about learning as a community. It's a great way of introspection and and as Randy had mentioned, diagnose and then prescribe. I think that's a great strategy. And so I just wanted to give some recognition to those that are here. I was once president of the library board. The library has always done a great job. I know, I remember when Mike Driscoll was hired as a IT manager in the library, and Mike has done a great job. I remember when Nick Bakora was a patrolman, and Nick has done a great job over the years. So I just want to commend the leaders that we have here on the screens for what they've done. I I trust them all to do the right thing, to do what's fair for all concerned. And 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 I I'm a big believer in diversity and moving forward. But I also want to commend the people that are here. I don't think anybody has any ill will or reluctance to move forward on these issues. Thank you.
Well, Jim, thank you for that comment. And that is a great way to, you know, to begin to wrap up our time here together tonight. I've noticed in the chat box that so many members of the of the panel have actually been responding to community members individually. I'd like to make one last call for any any other thoughts from our community members, anyone who would like to speak directly with the panel. Hearing none, I want to say to the members of the panel.
It looks like we do have two hands still raised.
We we do. Hands went up. You guys saw them before I saw them. I see, Madeline McCarron. Madeline, if you haven't unmuted, please go ahead.
I have. I would, you know, we've, we feel like we're doing as much as we can. And yet I have heard on, probably from three separate people on different occasions with different backgrounds, you know, they're people of color or of a different faith, and they have fear, right? One woman, you know, I think she said, maybe she said to me personally, you know, when all the George Floyd stuff was going on, she, you know, she's mixed race, and they were debating whether they should move their son's bed away from the window. You know, there's a man of, I think, Cuban descent who, you know, people yell at him on the street, you know, go go back where you came from. And so we're not doing, there's something still wrong. And, you know, we had the, you know, I think the library tried to have something on immigrant rights, and then there were all kinds of protests, and I think, you know, there was a backing down there. We've had graffiti. You know, we need to do something, and of course, it's up to all of us. It's not up to just you. But there's still a lot that is not welcoming, obviously, right? If people feel, if people feel free to strike fear into other people because of the way they look or the religion they practice, something is still wrong.
Madeline, thank you for those comments. Unfortunately, no matter what we do, you know, we could, we could spend a million dollars on this effort in the next year, and we're not going to eliminate 100% of the racism within our community or any community. It's just not going to happen here. It's not a perfect world. And so unfortunately, things happen. And I I addressed in my opening statements that I was very proud of this community in the respectful way that our residents protested after the George George Floyd murder. And so I think that's reflective of our community generally. But certainly incidents are going to happen, and we're going to do all we can to prevent them from happening in the future. But no matter what we do, no matter how much money we spend in this effort, we're not going to eliminate everything. So that's unfortunate.
Mayor, thank you for those comments. Heidi, you also mentioned, you raised your hand, but you have a question to ask, and I'm sending you the the unmute message now.
Yes, thank you so much. I know that I've already spoken. Just one final question I saw in the chat, and I think it's an important question to ask. And that is the report that Kaleidoscope comes up with. Will the community be given access, full access to the entire report? Or will we just be given a summary? We are asking for full disclosure.
Randy, if you could just address the process going forward and and what steps the village board will be taking in response to the report that we received.
Sure, you know, and there's there's the information that's being collected. Obviously, some of it is going to be confidential even to, you know, myself and the HR department because there's individual survey responses and so forth that were the identities of of our employees. You know, we we want that that information to be anonymous. There will be a report that will be presented to the village board, and that will be public. That's that's the goal here. There's, you know, we will have a series of recommendations that will be made public as part of this process. And it will, by necessity, because it's an open meeting, the village board will be discussing those recommendations in public. So yes, the information, the deliverables from this report will be will be shared and be discussed in public for sure, for sure.
Sandy, thank you so much for your clarifying comments about how the report will be issued and and disseminated. Again, I want to say thank you to all of the members of the panel who have been answering chat questions along the way, which has given us a lot of opportunity to cover a great amount of bandwidth and space. With with that, I'm going to make, okay, I said it the last time, was my final call, one more last call for any, oh, no, see, that didn't work. I have three more people, three more people. Also, everyone, we're running a little tiny bit ahead of our time. So if we could work really hard to make sure that we keep our comments and questions to, under that two-minute mark, we'll be able to address the next three people as as quickly as possible before before we have to close for the night. So Rosemary, if you haven't already unmuted, and I'm sending you the note, please do. And then we'll talk to Tom and the Crucius family. And I think that that will bring us to our to our maximum time limit at eight o'clock.
Great. Thank you, Tanya, and thank you all for being here. And thank you to all the the community members that showed up as well. I think that that's extremely telling, and I hope that that is noted by all all present. You know, just a few minutes ago, Mayor Hayes mentioned something about we could spend a million dollars and we wouldn't solve the problem. And that's, I 100% agree with that. I do think, though, that there is a lot to be said for being more public in our stand about how we, as a community, feel about the belongingness that Randy talked about at the at the start of the the session, as well as, you know, being welcoming. You know, I've run into situations with people in stores and on the street where they've been discriminated against, not felt like they belonged, not felt like they were welcome. I mean, simple things like putting up banners on Arlington Heights Road of people of different colors saying, everyone is welcome here. I think we've all seen what can happen when people in power project the right messages at times of crises and when they don't. And I think that this board and this government owes it to the people of this community to have a richer life because of diversity and to make our position much more public in terms of not tolerating hate, not as a reactive measure, but as a proactive measure and a proactive message. And I think there are a lot of ways we could do that that would not cost a million dollars at all, but would have a lot of great impact and effect. So thank you all again. I just wanted to mention that.
And thank you for your for your comments as well. Tom, if you haven't unmuted yourself, please, please go ahead and do that and and talk to the panel.
Yeah, my comments also about the the comment from Mayor Hayes about saying we could spend money and the problem's not going to go away. I feel like pretty much everyone understands that the problem's not going to be able to go away. But it's about trying to make less of a problem. Like, if it's at a five, try to get it down to a three. And I feel like the comment of saying it's never going to go away is just a way to excuse the racism or racist activism. And then try to pat yourself on the back for the protests and the other stuff. And I feel like that attitude might be lending people to feel unwelcome in the city. So I just think that's something to look at and try to reflect on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your, for those comments. And for the Crucius family, I am trying to send you the note to unmute. And I'm not sure that you can. If you can unmute, please do.
I, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christina Crucius. I'm a lifelong resident of Arlington Heights. I'm wondering how the history of structural racism is being sufficiently addressed in this process. We've heard several people talk about being welcoming, but obviously, there's more involved that than that. I think several people have alluded already to various barriers. But I particularly want to note, several folks have brought up housing and homeownership. I think it's important to recognize some of our history in Arlington Heights. Back in the 70s, there was an affordable housing project that was essentially shot down under zoning, but it would have made the village more diverse. It went all the way to the Supreme Court, and it was not. And the ruling essentially said that because we did not intend to be racist, it wasn't. But that's not how racism works. It's more about the outcomes. So I guess what I'm asking, what I want to know is, how are we really considering things like the structural, the history, historic wealth gap, and our town's own history in contributing to racist policies? How are we addressing that? And really owning up to that and working to move past that? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your question on that. I didn't catch your first name again?
My name is Christina.
Christina, thanks for, thanks for that. To be fair, it's a really tough question. And and I think that, you know, when you look at structural racism, and I I think, you know, we all can agree that you look at the long history of our country, that, you know, to the extent that one can say things are fair now, you know, you, they certainly weren't fair not very long ago. And I'm not suggesting that they're fair now. I'm just saying, to even the extent that people would say that it is, you don't have to look back very far to see some real history that prevented people from being upwardly mobile and so forth. And obviously, that casts a shadow to this. And obviously, that casts a shadow to this day. The challenge is, how do you tackle that on a local level? Because these issues didn't all unfold on a local level. They unfolded nationally, and, and it's difficult to tackle at a local level. And so I think when we look now, you know, I think we have to have those things in, in our mind. But I don't know how we can go back and undo some of the things that we all know have, were done and, and, you know, weren't done over the years that should have been in a, in a way that wouldn't be using an extremely blunt instrument and, and, and not really solve a problem. I think that's tough. And I'm not saying that there aren't ways that we can explore these things and talk about things like we're saying. I'm not saying I have all the answers, but it's very difficult. And, you know, I think when we take steps like we did for affordable housing, I, I think that's a step in the right direction. Is our affordable inclusionary housing ordinance, is it perfect? Does it address every aspect of affordability? Absolutely not. Would fully acknowledge that, but it's a step in the right direction, and it's a, it's a step along the process. But I think that part of the answer to this is that, you know, we're here to talk about these things. And I think we need to continue to talk about them. But, you know, I, I, I think we, we also need to acknowledge that, that particular issue is, is a difficult one to tackle at a local level.
Randy, thank you for those, for those comments. And to the other members of the panel, your time and attention to this, your willingness to spend time with us and have these, these conversations that sometimes are a little bit difficult. To the community members at the Village of Arlington Heights, thank you for your participation, your thoughts, your interest, and, and your tough questions that give us a lot of things to think about and, and sets the pace for, for moving into the future. More than anything, thanks for supporting the village in creating a welcoming community for all. It is, it is a continual process. And we're grateful at the Kaleidoscope Group to have the opportunity to work with you and to work with the village and the many other people who are here this evening. And with that, I'd like to wish everyone who's on this call, everyone who's taken time out of their day to have a very happy and a safe holiday season. And look forward to future encounters with you as we continue the, the journey in a lot of ways together. With that, good night, everyone, and thank you for joining us.
Good night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.